Welcome, everybody, to the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors meeting. Tonight, we're having a board training with Jolly Patterson from Miller Nash LLP. Thank you so much for joining us. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for coming because I do know that one of the most high-leverage activities boards can do to increase their efficacy is to learn together. So I'm really happy that we're able to do this, and thank you to staff for helping us put together. Turn it over to Jolly.
Okay. So, thank you very much for having me here. As Director Trager said, I am Jolly Patterson. I'm a partner with Miller Nash. I have been practicing law for over 30 years. The vast majority of that time has been in education. It is a -- I love doing education law. It's a privilege to work with public school districts, and I do, in particular, a lot of work with elected boards like yourselves. And for a while, I was a general counsel at a school district at Portland Public and also the board secretary. And so I have a lot of understanding about the importance and complexity of being an elected volunteer board member. So I just appreciate your service, and I also -- it's a great idea that you're taking a little bit of time today to do some basic training and talk about some best practices. Like I said, I work with a lot of boards. Oftentimes, because I'm a lawyer, I get called in when things are challenging. So I see what can work well and what can help boards work through challenging issues, work together, all for the benefit of the students that we are serving. So today, I wanted to -- this evening, I wanted to touch on some of the main issues that I think it's just important for boards to have a baseline knowledge in, particularly around public meetings law, ethics laws, the GIF laws, that kind of thing, but then also spend some time around just best practices as you are all working together. I've got a PowerPoint here, but really, I think this works best when it's interactive, and if there are questions that you have as this comes up or discussions, you know, please don't feel like you have to wait until I'm done talking. So with that, okay, let's make the clicker work. Okay. So what I thought we would do is just this overview first of the public meetings law and then of the ethics laws. Again, this may be old news to some of you if you've been in other trainings or things like that, but it's also -- these are areas of both responsibility for boards and some risk if board members aren't aware of or aren't complying with these laws. So I think it's a really good idea to just refresh your knowledge. And again, if you have questions about how any of these things play out in particular instances, you know, let's talk through those situations. So the first thing, let's just get into our public -- okay, so it's one of -- it's here. I'm gonna -- I'm just gonna click all the way through so we see what's here. So as you know, as we are experiencing right here, when you meet as a board, you have to meet in a publicly noticed meeting. There are sometimes executive sessions, we're gonna talk about that, where members of the public can't attend, but anytime you are operating as a board, it has to be in a properly noticed meeting. It's not only you as board members who are subject to that law, but any committee or advisory body that is tasked with making recommendations to you is also -- if that body makes recommendations directly to the board, they are also subject to the law. So right now, I'm working with a board where they wanted a group of community members to go and study a ballot issue and come back to them with a recommendation about whether they were gonna put something on the ballot. That recommendation was going directly to the board, not through the superintendent. If it goes through the superintendent, that might be different. That committee had no idea that they were supposed to be complying with the public meetings law, and now that district is dealing with some real challenges out of that. So just as you are thinking about your structure as you have committees, or if a quorum, if you sit on any committees, it's just important to be aware that it's not just you, but also other bodies that may advise you that are subject to the law. So you just wanna make sure that you're, you know, thinking about that as you are putting together, you know, your structure of how you do your governance. A big issue is this question of serial communication under the public meetings law. So it used to be, when I started this work frankly 25 years ago, that sometimes elected boards would -- they'd have kind of side conversations, or we would call them side meetings with the superintendent. And they would never be quorums, right? But you'd kind of have discussions that would help provide background information or something like that to an issue that then the board was gonna vote on. That practice understandably came under pretty strict scrutiny by the courts a few years ago, and this issue of serial communication is now quite clearly prohibited. So what that -- and it's something that can make sometimes the work of elected boards more challenging because -- but it's very important to be aware of and comply with it. The -- I absolutely applaud the -- and agree with the purpose of the public meetings law, which is so that the work of elected bodies are transparent to boards. But in trying to work through all the issues, especially when you are volunteer members, it can be really hard to not be able to do problem solving or discussion or anything like that until you're all together in one place. It's not like boards, when you're kind of maybe on the city or the county and you're getting paid for your time, and you might see each other more during the day, so it's easier to notice a meeting so that you can sit and discuss something. It's a challenge for school boards. But it's also a practice that this serial communication issue that a lot of people in the communities are paying very close attention to. So one of the things that I see for some of the boards that I'm working with is if somebody maybe is unhappy with something that the board is doing, they will make a public records request for all of the emails and all of the text messages and all of the phone calls that you may have between each other. And they will try to track those to show that you're engaging in serial communication. So what does serial communication mean? Serial communication means that you, even if you don't have a quorum of the board discussing an issue, if a quorum of the board in serial communications, one communication after another after another, talks about an issue that then the board is gonna come together and vote on, those individual serial communications are considered a violation of the public meetings law. So if you have a conversation with your fellow board member about an issue that you're gonna vote on in a couple of weeks, and then you have a conversation with your fellow board member about the same thing, and then you have a conversation with your fellow board member about the same thing in a close proximity and time particularly, you've now had a ser -- a quorum of the board has now had a serial communication about something you're gonna vote on, and that would be considered a violation of the public meetings law.
If it just was the first, if two board members having a conversation, then that's not considered serial because it's not going down and getting a quorum established on that serial communication.
Right.
But what if that, one of those board members has that similar conversation with two other people? Then it becomes serial, right?
And this is what makes it really hard to track because you may not know, and didn't really have any reason to know, that you talked, you know, like down the line. And so it makes it very challenging to, you know, seek understanding or problem solve or, you know, try and think of creative ideas or all those things that that kind of informal communication does outside of a public meeting. Yep.
So we'll just play a game. So say Derek and I have a conversation. Say Phil and Tom have a conversation. These are separate conversations.
Right.
And we didn't know that these conversations were happening. It'd be really hard to know if that's engaging in serial communication when, say, two board members are close to one another or whatnot, and then would that be a violation if the, you know, because nobody passed information along to another, with just these two, then those two, and then those two? And if you were to probably pull records, like, whoa, they all talked, but then you'd know those two never talked to each other.
Right, right.
Would that, how does that play?
So I would argue to a court that that would not be serial communication. But part of the challenge that we're in right now is that the courts haven't really looked at very many of these cases, and so we don't have a lot of guidance about what is allowed or not. And so it makes it, so it creates a risk area in some ways for school board members where you do wanna have, I mean, those conversations that you have individually are valuable because you're testing your understanding and you're, you know, you're doing all that kind of thing, your problem solving on behalf of the district. But, so there are some boards that have kind of gone to the, I wouldn't call it an extreme, but have gone pretty far in terms of saying, "We're just not ever gonna do that. We're gonna be so careful about serial communication that we're not gonna talk to each other about district business outside of school board meetings." And with maybe the exception to that being the chair and the vice chair because they need to have those conversations to structure things. There are, and that's a pretty, that's probably the least risky approach to this issue. There are other boards that have not taken such a strong position about it and kind of think, "Okay, if I'm just talking to one person about this, and that other person is just talking to me, then that should be okay." So it's something, it's just something to be aware of in your practice and to be really careful about in ways that maybe we haven't had to be so much in the past. The other thing to keep in mind is, and you'll hear me say this a few times, you know, text messages, people think that they're talking when they're texting, right? Text messages are probably the thing that I think I see boards mostly around this area getting in trouble about. Text messages either because it evidences serial communication or because those text messages, as all of our text messages are, are informal. Sometimes they're too informal, and, but they are public records because you are talking about district business. So in many ways, I would just advise you to be very careful about what you are putting, certainly in email, but also in text messages.
So when you say get in trouble, what does that mean in terms of remedy from the court?
Well, so, that's a great question. So most, when you are, so when I think of the trouble that some of the boards that I'm working with are dealing with now, it's frankly mostly reputational, like the community, you know, there's been a public records request for the emails or the texts. The texts may not reflect well on everybody. Those all go up on social media, and, you know, there you go. In terms of what the, if there's a violation of the public meetings law, there's a variety of things that people can do to address those. In some cases, going to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and lodging a complaint about that, and there's a variety of remedies that may come with that. Now, sometimes the, and we're gonna talk about Oregon Government Ethics Commission in a minute, usually, so I think that that's, they're a pretty helpful body actually, and usually when they see kind of mostly unintentional missteps, they will give a board member or a board a letter of guidance or require some training or something like that. They're not gonna fine you, you know, right up front, but that is a possible remedy. So, but mostly, the most instant impact of it is just kind of that reputational distraction that occurs. So, but you just wanna be, you know, really careful about when you think about serial communication. You are allowed to have, so a couple of caveats. One, communication about things, about administrative things that you're not gonna be voting on is okay. So for instance, if you're trying to set up a time for a meeting, right, or something like that, you can communicate about those kinds of things. The other thing is, is one way communication isn't considered serial communication. So with some boards that I work with, the board chair will wanna send out something substantive to the rest of the board before a board meeting. And, but we'll, but we're very careful that that goes out, and there's a caveat at the end that says, "This is a one-way communication. Please do not respond to all. Please don't engage in deliberation until we come to the board meeting." So that, you know, sometimes that, your board secretary will send out agendas, but sometimes if there's a particularly sensitive issue or something like that, a board member may wanna communicate with the rest of the board in that way, and having some of those disclaimers on your emails. So one, another disclaimer, it's not on here because it's not related to this issue, but a disclaimer that any emails to and from this email address is maybe subject to the public records law is another disclaimer on the bottom of your email that can be helpful so that people know if they're gonna send you a whole long, you know, email about something that it may not be confidential. So, but then also saying when you're communicating with board members, don't, you know, please don't reply all to this.
And so when I send communications, I blind copy the board because I just don't want the possibility, but I really like that idea of the disclaimer, "Please don't deliberate before the meeting."
Yep.
You always say, "Don't reply all," though. Like, or you say it's on board, it's on blind copy, so it's not have to reply all.
Sometimes. I don't always say it, but I always put in the blind copy. I never, yeah.
Right, right. So, yep.
Sorry, I know you said there hadn't been a lot of cases that have gone before the courts yet. Do you have, and if you don't, we'll probably get them later, but just any of the reference cases that we might be able to just to go review and watch now that?
Sure, I'll send them to you. The one that I'm thinking of, it's the, is it the Handley case? I'd be happy to send that to you. So it's really the main one that went to the, that made it all the way through the courts, and I, the name of it is gonna pop into my head in just a second, I know it is. But there, the, that was an interesting case because that, in that case, the elected body voted on responses to public records requests, and there was a sensitive public records request that was gonna come through, and there was a three-member commission and, or a five-member commission, and three of them before the vote kind of orchestrated what the vote was going to be. And so, so that was the one that was found, yeah. So that's just a, something to be mindful of about public, or serial communication. And in that case, like I'm just looking at one of my notes, right, court said, you know, "No single email or phone call involved a quorum of the board." So there was emails and phone calls through a quorum, and the quote there is, "The determinative factors are whether a sufficient number of officials are involved, what they discuss, and the purpose for which they discuss it, not the time, place, or manner of their communication." So it wasn't, you don't, and this is true with public records too, I'll talk about that in a minute, but you can't hide behind the fact that, "Oh, it was from my personal cellphone," or "One communication was a text, and then another communication was a phone call," right? It's really about, were you talking about district business and something that the board was going to vote on? Because another thing that we can sometimes argue to a court is, was the topic of the serial communication something that was actually gonna come before the board for a vote? So there was one case where we successfully got out of a situation because a number of board members were talking about whether they wanted to go out for a bond, but it was gonna be something that was probably several years in the future, and so that, it may not have even been that makeup of the board that eventually would have voted on it, but I'm like, I'm glad we won that, but it's a, but that's, you can't always count on that. Usually, what you're talking about is something that's gonna, you're gonna have to deal with in your capacity as a board member. And I answer lots of questions about serial communication, so that's the other thing, like sometimes just checking in, like, is this practice okay, or is this kind of thing okay? Always happen to, happy to kind of problem solve things like that. Okay. Another area that is a really good, I think, did you fix the like that didn't have to click through? Thank you. I never know if it's my PowerPoint that's set up to do that or how that works. So, executive sessions. This is another area where there is a, like, kind of amazingly, I mean, to me, increased focus on board use of executive sessions. So again, when I started my practice, probably through 2015, like, you didn't see concerns about executive sessions very much. I mean, I think board members were complying with it, but people weren't paying a whole lot of attention to the use of executive sessions. And in the last maybe five to seven years, the number of complaints that have gone to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission about improper use of executive sessions has just skyrocketed. And so it's really important when you are meeting an executive session, both to make sure that you are, and oftentimes you will work with the superintendent and staff in doing this, but to make sure that you are noticing it under the right session, section, that if there's prerequisites to being able to meet under that section, you fill those prerequisites, like if you're considering a complaint or discipline of an employee, you have to give them notice and the right for an open meeting, all of those sorts of things. But most importantly, that once you're in that executive session, you are sticking to the topic of that executive session. And that's what can be really hard because you start talking about, you know, "We're meeting an executive session to," like, there's a new provision that allows you to talk about security measures for board meetings, right? Or something, like you're allowed to talk about this limited area, and it's really easy to start straying away and talking about, "Well, we should, maybe we should have a policy around security issues." Or if we are looking at a disciplinary issue for an employee, or we're in executive session about a, maybe a student expulsion has been challenged, like all these reasons, it's very easy to stray outside of those guidelines. And that's when either, and I don't know if you record your executive sessions, I generally think that's not a great practice, taking minutes is a better practice, but, you know, you may have, you may have media there, you may have other people there who, and sometimes, I hope this will not happen for you, but sometimes when there's dispute among board members, right? It's like board members will accuse each other of overstepping executive session bounds within that. So it's just a very good thing to be aware of because the other issue there is, as elected officials, you are individually responsible for complying with the public meetings law, including the executive session provision. So if there is a complaint to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, it is against you individually, and there are limited circumstances in which the district can provide you legal counsel. So I've got some boards who find themselves, "Okay, now I've got a complaint by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission." Nobody wants to have, you know, their name associated with an ethics commission, and they're sort of out there on their own because the district can't pay for legal counsel for an individual board member. It's sort of a complicated issue, but it's one of the things where just some prevention and making sure you're being careful upfront is a good idea. So one of the things, like the slide says, that I do recommend is designate somebody in your executive session to make sure you're kind of staying within the parameters of what you're allowed to do. Oftentimes, when I'm in executive sessions with the board, that's a role I'll play, where if they'll start, you know, talking about policy issues or talking about something else, I just respectfully say, you know, that we need to table that for another time or something like that. Even having that designated role will help if there's a complaint because it shows, "Okay, we're paying attention to this and we're trying to comply." So. So that is, that is something with executive sessions. Also, I will note, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission has a very good website, and they are, I find them to be a very helpful agency. So if you have questions, and we can talk about this also in a minute with the GIF limitations, like, they're great. You can just call up and ask, you know, ask an anonymous question, and they will give you guidance. So without identifying who you are or something like that. So it's a, it's one of those agencies that I've thought are, you know, are particularly helpful, which is always nice. Oh, and you know what? Was I on the right thing? And then just public records. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on public records, I've already said it, but anything you put in writing about district business is a public record. It doesn't matter if you do it on your, from your personal email, from your personal computer, from your personal phone, in a text message, they're all public records. So, and more and more, I don't know if it's happened here, but more and more members of the public are definitely using public records requests as a, you know, I mean, which they're allowed to do, right? But as a tool to find out what is happening in the district. And so, and what that has meant for board members who don't use their district email address is that oftentimes we have to go into, like, if board members are using a Gmail address or something like that, you've gotta go in and figure out, all right, what's personal and what's district business and, you know, all those sorts of things. So I highly recommend using a district email and keeping your communications very professional, so including anything you do on texts. So it's just a, otherwise, it can be an area of challenge.
So there, you're mostly referencing communication-type records, but it would also pertain to notes and, you know, if you went on your computer and you were putting some thoughts down just for notes after a meeting or between meetings, it would also encompass those things, right?
Yes, yes. So, yep, like, as you are keeping your own communication, I'm trying to think if there's any, I don't think that there would probably be any sort of exemption for that. Now, one of the things with the public meetings law, the public records law, I'm sorry, is there's, there are a lot of areas, there are a lot of, not a lot, there are specific things that are exempt from public records. So... things that are exempt from public records. So, or, and by exempt, I mean, it's still considered a public record, but you don't have to produce it to the requester. So, there's one, I'm trying to think if I've had an instance where a board member's notes from a meeting were requested and we were able to keep them, withhold them. There's one exemption that's called an internal advisory communication, where, like, depending on what's in your notes, it might be able to be exempt, but there's nothing, there's no across-the-board exemption that says your notes are not, you know, are not, are not subject to a public records.
And, you know, we are all our own secretaries in that case. If we do, if you do get requested, you have to be the one that goes and digs through and finds things, and that's not fun.
Right, right.
I speak from experience.
And sometimes, that's challenged. So, if you're using your district email, then that's on the district server, and the district can just do it. With the, with the, with the boards that I work with, the board members who chose not to use their district-issued email, when the public records request came in, or for text messages on their phone, the way those, we handled it in those situations is, the superintendent's office asked the board member to provide any responsive records. But didn't, you know, didn't go to their house and look through it, or didn't look at their phone, or anything like that, right? Board member did, then the requester was able to find, through the things that other board members had produced, emails that that board member should have produced from their Gmail that they didn't, right? And then raised a question, "Do we need to have a third party go in and look through this person's Gmail in order to make sure that they have produced everything that should be responsive?" And that's the last thing. I mean, there's, I have had a few situations in my life where I've had to sit down with board members and go through all of their texts, and make the, me, I'm making the determination about what is district business or not. And I hate having to do that. So...
Tedious.
But it is, right. Well, it's also, that's your private business. I mean, it's, it's, you know, so, it's a challenge.
So, I feel like I do a pretty good job of separating that, because I have a whole separate phone. I know Derek keeps a separate notebook, just for board stuff, and other board members do the same, but this is my notes. Now, I'm using a Google account, that's the school district's supplied to keep all my notes there.
That's perfect.
As long as it's under that account, because it's Gmail, right? So, I have one for my business, I have one personal.
Right, right.
And it's like, it's not touching any of that, it's stored in the separate account.
So, you can pull it as easily as you want.
Yeah, so, but that's not going to pull into my other, I don't want them touching my business.
You and me got patient records. Right, exactly. Right, exactly, exactly. So, it sounds like that, I'm just being thoughtful.
But I don't have to hand over this whole device.
No, no.
We'd be able to go in there, if we had to do a record, we could go in there and go, "We want all of Josh's notes from those meetings." So, what you're doing, it works perfectly, because then we can archive everything.
Well, and usually, I tell my colleagues, because you're the master of these.
Thankfully, I had been, you know, slow.
But public records requests usually are specific. It would be like, "I want every email between Joshua and Dan Bush between October 1st and January 1st." Usually, they're specified in timeline.
And I try to drill people down to, you know, if they're, it's so broad, it's going to cost them money, you know, and try to like, "Hey, I'm trying to help you, let's narrow this down." I think the other thing that, you know, when Owen brought up about having, you know, his example, and you talked about, you know, internal documents, I think one other thing to note, and, so, correct me on my legal analysis here.
Yeah, 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 right.
Is that if we say something, let's say we said, "Hey, this is an internal document, this is not, you know, subject to release," or it's going to be, huge portions of it redacted, the person requesting can have that challenged.
Absolutely.
Through the district attorney.
Attorney, yep, yep.
And so, and then that decision can also get challenged, which has happened here, to where the district attorney says, "Nope, that's redacted," and then that can get challenged. So, there is, there is a process by which those decisions, you know, our decision to say, "That's confidential information, or not subject to a public release," that can get challenged, which can get challenged.
Right.
Another, probably best practices question here is, the email that we have through the school district, I'm deleting a bunch of, like, I feel like they're, they're not, they're not in our focus folder, like, they're the Atlantis, the Atlantic Weekly, or whatever, I'm just harvesting.
OSBA notifications.
Yeah, I'm just deleting that, but I, are we, should never delete anything from the school district email? Like, how does that work?
Our server will still keep that.
Exactly.
Okay, so I don't, so it doesn't matter?
Don't worry, because you're just managing your inbox.
I'm just trying to...
Right, exactly, get the junk out of the way. Yeah, 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 I wouldn't worry about that.
Retention period.
But, right, so, that, because that's the question, is there's, so, there, the, there's a state law that defines retention, records retention policies for public entities. And the challenge is, there's not just one for email, right? It really is, what is the topic? So, but, but, most districts, including here, have all that on the server, so it's not something, you know, you should have to worry about. So, okay, so then, let's go on to an overview of the ethics law. So, the, there we go. Okay. So, the Oregon Government Ethics Law is what applies to, obviously, elected bodies. I don't know if you've had a training recently about the ethics law, and I won't, I won't spend a lot of, I mean, we could talk about the ethics law for a long time. Whoops. Is that me?
Yeah, you clicked on the button that makes it blink.
There we go. Okay. So, a public official may not use or attempt to use their position to obtain financial gain or avoid financial detriment, right? That is sort of the essence of the public meetings law, I mean, of the ethics law. This, so, and it applies both to you as elected officials, even though you're volunteers, I think you know that, it also applies to, you know, paid employees. What is sometimes surprising is, it's not just you, but it's also your relatives, and the, and it's, there's a very broad list of what qualifies as a relative. So, all of these individuals, you know, your step siblings cannot also financially benefit or have, or have a detriment from your, from your service as a board member. In some cases, the, the ethics law also applies to members of your household. So, if there is a, for instance, even if they're not a, even if they're not a relative as defined by a relative, if there's somebody who's, like, living in your household, it can also apply to them. So, let's say you are, let's say you are providing housing for your, you know, daughter's college friend, and she's been living in your home for nine months, and she has a gardening business, and her gardening business wants a, wants a contract with the district, right? She's probably, and you have to vote on that contract, I mean, I just came up with that out of my head, like, that's probably not a real example, right? But, she's a member of your household, and you could have a conflict of interest in voting on that, on that contract. So, you have to think, it's not just you, but it's, it's a lot of people around you who are also governed by this law. It's also, of course, any business with which you are associated. So, if in your, if in your, in your professional life, outside of being a board member, you have a business, you're an owner of a business, or an investor in a business, or an employee in a business, you also can't use your position as a board member to either have financial gain or avoid a financial detriment through your actions as a board member. This is a place where, again, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is very helpful. So, a lot of times, you know, weird little questions come up, right? And, like, would this be a conflict of interest? Would this not be a conflict of interest? Would this be a violation of the ethics law? Would it not? And just asking them is usually a really good idea. So, if you have any question, I mean, again, you can call them, you can ask anonymously, you don't have to identify yourself, but, but it's a good, it's a good practice to know it is there. So, let's see, there are some exemptions to what you are, so what you can receive without it being a violation of the ethics law. We're going to talk about gifts in a second, those are more complicated, but, so, if you, there we go. So, it is not a violation of the ethics law to receive compensation, right? But that's the kind of thing that needs to be said out loud, because you are, the, for employees, you get to, you know, you get to have your compensation. If you get some kind of honorarium, or a plaque, or something like that, if the value is low, that's not a violation, that's not considered a financial benefit to you. We're going to talk about gifts in a second, which go into this, this in more detail. You can have your, your expenses reimbursed. So, there are some things where you are allowed to have a financial benefit related to being a board member, and it's not a violation of the law. The gift prohibition is something that came up, has been much more of a focus of the legislature in the last probably eight years, because what you saw is a lot of public officials who may not have been, you know, voting to assign a contract to their business, but, so they weren't directly violating the law in that way, but they were getting trips to Hawaii, right? Or they were getting other things of high value that, that the public were concerned were influencing their work as a public official. And so, there are now, Oregon has very tight limits on what you can accept as a gift. So, the essential rule is that you can't accept a gift from any source that has an administrative or legislative interest in your work, we're going to talk about that, of more than $50 in a year. So, what that, so, so then, anybody who has a legislative or administrative interest is there to find, anybody who has an interest in your vote is essentially what that, what a legislative or administrative interest is. So, let's say your next-door neighbor is a teacher, and you vote on that teacher's contract every year, and that teacher wants to give you a gift of $100. That teacher has a legislative or administrative interest in your, in your vote, and accepting her, his or her gift would be a technical violation of the law. So, that's where it gets, this gift issue gets very challenging. You've got to pay attention to kind of who's giving you what, and in what capacity are they giving it to you. Similarly, if you go, let's say you go to a, you know, the school law conference, right? The, the school district can pay for your lodging, you can eat the food there, but if, but Miller-Nash, I can't then take you all out golfing, right? I can't probably even take you out to dinner. So, like, I take nobody out to dinner. I mean, unfortunately, right? So, because that would be over $50. So...
Sorry, is there any guidance on, it said, "Single source," is there anything for, like, aggregate?
So, here, wait, let me make sure.
Yeah, over 50 in calendar year from a single source.
Right.
Is there any guidance, like, do they cap it, where it's like, okay, if you're receiving 500 from multiple sources, they're all under that $50 limit? Is there any guidance to that?
No, so there's not an aggregate, like, you can't, it's, there's nothing that says in aggregate, you can't receive more than this. So, but it would have to be, but the single source, part of the reason for that single source is that you have to be careful about what the source is, and this is kind of getting into the weeds, but, for instance, well, let's just use Miller-Nash as an example. So, let's say I took, let's say I, I took Director Trager out for lunch, but we were really careful to make sure it was only $25, and so I paid for it. But then, my partner, six months later, took you out, and it was $35.
Over the limit.
We're over the limit right now, because the source isn't me, it's Miller-Nash, because Miller-Nash has the contract with the district. So, this is where, like, you've got to be, you kind of, you have to pay more attention than, than a lot of people are used to paying attention, yep.
So, I mean, it sounds like this is based on quid pro quo, which is, like, granted, I don't get to do this nearly as much as I used to, like, go golfing. Never, I don't worry, I got that. Because your one person pays, you got a line, and then, "I'll pay for your, you know, green fee today."
Right.
Is that, I mean, and say, we have no intention of talking about any school stuff at all, it's not why we're out there. Does that all just go away now?
It doesn't, so that's the issue, is, it doesn't matter whether, the court isn't going to look at, or the Government Ethics Commission isn't going to look at, "Okay, did you get on the green?" And then start talking about, you know, the contracts that were coming up. If that, if your golfing partner has a contract that the board is going to vote on, that is just, it doesn't have to be an explicit quid pro quo, it is just a, like, that, they, they have a legislative or administrative interest in your vote.
Well, so, but this is where you could almost argue the, the other side, because right now, we're in bond season, and everybody in this community, we're a small town, is interested in a school bond. You know, it's like, so technically, everybody could have a say in how, whatever board member votes for a bond, not a bond or anything, so, I mean, this, it just kind of seems like, obviously, I'm not taking any.
Do they give you gifts, Josh? Because I want to, I don't, no. I don't ever get gifts.
Question on the other side, is, what about board, like, I donate a lot of money to the school district.
Right.
Is that allowed?
Yes, that is allowed. And keep doing it. No, that is allowed.
Not as much as other people.
That is allowed, right, that is allowed.
So, we can...
But it is, it is a challenge. So, for instance, one of the, one of the, oops, I keep doing that. Okay, nope, I did it again. So, these are things that are exceptions, whoops, sorry, these are things that are exceptions to the gift limit. That second one, gifts from relatives or members of the household, came up under a situation that was similar to what I described. A board member's daughter was a teacher in the school district, right?
Yes.
Daughter gave mom a Christmas present, and that technically was a violation of the ethics law. So, that was an amendment that they made to say, "Okay, if they're your relative, they can give you gifts over $50, even if they have a legislative or administrative interest in your work." So, these are things that would, you know, not, so, for instance, the food you had today, right, is just something that the district can buy for you, that's fine, that's not considered a gift, that's not considered a financial benefit to you, even though you didn't have to pay for your own dinner. But those are, that's the level of detail that the law and the Ethics Commission is kind of... But those are, that's the level of detail that the law and the Ethics Commission is kind of looking at. So, and I'm being mindful of our time. So, this is, again, like, just a place where you want to be, you want to be thoughtful about what you are, what you're doing. And if you have questions, you know, either talk to the superintendent or call OGC, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, okay?
One specific question, just because it came up.
Yep.
So, it used to be that the school district would provide a family's all sports pass to every board member. So, it was worth, basically, they're worth a hundred or two hundred dollars now. And my understanding was that was stopped some years ago because of concern of a violation of this. So, is that correct, then? That would be a, considered a gift?
I think that there's a case about that. I think that there's a, where it may not be a gift, but it's a financial benefit that you would not, that you are getting only because you are a board member, and that's not, you know, key to your work, right? And so, that would be a financial benefit that would be prohibited under the law.
Makes sense. Well, that's this. I got this given to me because I do all sports, a lot of sports physicals.
Okay.
And so, like, had nothing to do with me being a board, but it was like, because they called me, and I'm like, yeah, bring him in, I'll get him in. Or I go to, I went to a school, I went to Scottsdale, probably did fifty of them that night.
Right, right.
Do I need to, like, shred this and burn it?
I don't think you need to shred it and burn it, but those are...
Owen saw, he got jealous.
Right, right, right. But those are, those are the kinds of things, like, that doesn't sound to me like it's an issue because the, the...
The intent behind it wasn't because I was a board member.
Well, but it's not so much intent. I guess the question is, is the person who gave you that gift, or the company that gave you that gift, and, and happy to talk about this offline too, which might be good. But, so, so the theoretical question would be, if the company who gives you that gift, then does the district, do you vote on a contract in your capacity as a board member with that company?
Well, the district itself gave the gift.
Right.
Yeah.
In this case.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well, so that might be, so let me think about that. I think that's probably fine. I think that's probably fine, but it's just something to think about in recognition of your service, right?
Okay.
But it's the kind of thing where, again, just, and, and it's unfortunate that this kind of, there's this heightened scrutiny around things that are, I mean, I shouldn't say unfortunate because I understand the intent of the law, right? It's just like the, you know, public meetings and public records law. But, things that are common courtesies and things where people want to, I mean, you do really hard jobs for nothing, right? Like, and lots of people want to thank you for that, including me. But, how people think, thank you for that is something that now we just have to pay, you know, more kind of mind to.
I think probably the bigger question on that one would be, I think the, more so than giving you the pass, would be the question around, did, are we only sending kids to your business and therefore providing you, you, your business more access to? That would probably create more scrutiny to say, we're actually promoting Josh's business by saying, we're just going to have Josh do all our physicals. So, part of the, so the bigger question for us would be to say, are we using multiple parties that are willing to provide this volunteer service for our kids' benefit?
Yeah.
And not creating something that is advantageous for you? I'd be more concerned about that than the fact that we gave you a pass. Because if we had three vent, three different people providing that, and we said, hey, thank you so much, this really saved our family a lot of money, and we gave three passes out, I'd be less worried because I could say, we gave it to the two other doctors in our area.
Yeah, I think it's something historically that is just got given because when Orr, Orr stepped down, he used to do a Saturday clinic, I think before, even the fall, and had a bunch of providers show up and try to get them all smashed out in a day. Now that he's retired, they're really scrambling, and I think they're using a variety of different people in town. It just happens to be that I have more availability. And I'm passionate about the athletics.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's wonderful, right? And sometimes that's the kind of thing where, again, run it by the O G E C, right? Like, just run it by them, run it by them anonymously, see what they say, and then, you know, you're good to go one way or another. Okay, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but you should be aware that if there is a situation where there's a vote, oh, go ahead.
My wife is a teacher in the district.
Right, okay.
Is that...
Right, right, the conflict of interest. So, you guys, right, exactly. So, where your vote may result in something where there's a, you know, a pecuniary benefit or detriment, you either have to declare a conflict, an actual conflict of interest, if it will for sure be to your personal benefit, like a, like a, you know, contract for your wife, and then not vote on that, on that vote, not participate in that vote. Or if it's a potential conflict of interest, it's not a, it's a, it's a may, not, it might be to your benefit, then you can declare a potential conflict of interest, but you can still participate in the vote. So, that's just something to pay attention to because those things are going to come up. I mean, there will...
We have in the past, and then we kind of quit doing it, and I'm kind of wondering if we should continue to bring that back up.
You know, so that's an interesting, I, I might want to look at what the latest guidance on that is. I think it's, so it's probably a better practice to just, to just do it.
Common courtesy, common courtesy.
Exactly. But, you know, there's, there's, there was one, and the reason I'm trying to think through the, the guidance I've seen is, there was one district where the, the board members were voting on, you know, I think, like, seven hundred teachers being renewed. And so, the fact that one, like, do you pull out one individual name? And how, you know, how do you do that? But, it really is, it's, it's probably a better practice.
Yeah, we, we used to label it as a potential.
Right, yes.
And just a common courtesy.
And do it that way, yep.
Voting to ratify a teacher's contract.
Yeah.
Tom could just say, oh, my potential conflict could be...
Me and Wally, me and Wally both had to do that.
Right, but you still voted.
Correct, correct.
But happy to talk through.
How would that work out then if there happens to be a split, three, three, and we lost? How would that work out?
No, no, I, I, I still vote on it. I just say, it's a potential. I just declare that it's a potential.
You're not excusing yourself.
No, I'm doing it, just so people know.
Okay.
There is a connection.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, this last one is just, again, some, this slide was just some information about the O G E C. Oh, which I think I have a typo there. It should say O G E C, not O C E G. Okay. What I now wanted to do is just go into what I have seen as some best practices for boards as I work with a lot of boards, and again, have a lot of respect for the complexity of the work that you do, and what makes a effective board that leads their district well and avoids kind of some of the reputational and legal risk that, that sometimes I do see. And, and we could talk about this for a long time, but I just wanted to highlight some things. So, one, and there are policies that are associated with this, so in the slides, that's what I've, what I've outlined. So, one, just remembering that you, you can only act as a board. Individual board members don't have authority to commit the district to anything, to require, you know, more than small amounts of work from the superintendent or staff, to, to go outside what the priorities of the, what the board are, that really you are, you work as a collective. So, it's, it's just important to remember that. It's also important to keep in mind the distinction between the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. So, you, school boards are essentially to make policy for the district, you set the budget, and you supervise the superintendent. And it is the superintendent's job to administer the day-to-day operations of the school and to carry out your policies. Now, sometimes there are some gray areas to whether something is a policy issue or an administration issue, and that's where what I see in resolving those is, you know, communication with the superintendent so that, that you're staying in your lane, and the superintendent is staying in the superintendent's lane. But, and I, it is, I see a lot of challenging situations where board members are getting involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. And in some ways, I understand that. So, you know, you are all here because you are successful and organized people. You are leaders in the community. You were able to run a successful campaign. One of the things that that means is you're pay, you pay a lot of attention to detail. And coming into a position like this where you are now expected to stay at a policy level and not look at the, not get involved in the details of what's happening in this classroom, or what complaint came from what teacher, or what, you know, parent, or something like that, and problems all of those can sometimes be a hard line to follow. But, you are a, boards are policymaking, you know, policy level boards. You're at a high level. So, really being thoughtful about that as you're going about your work is, is something that I see makes a big difference in effective boards who continue to lead their districts well. One of the, okay, I just keep, I don't know, my thumb is to, let's see, did I miss one? Okay. So, then, when we think about policy development, what is, how does the board go about, go about the policy development process? And you've got some policies that, that address that. So, your policy on, oops, let's see, that was one that was missing in my slide, so I'm going to turn around and look at it. So, you have a policy development, you've got actually several policies and administrative regulations about your policy development process. Generally, policies are recommended by the superintendent to the board. They either come through OSBA, you know, almost all the time, they come through OSBA. Those, the OSBA policies are pretty carefully crafted to reflect, in most cases, legal requirements. And so, so there's, and this board has a three-step process. You've got a three-step reading process to make sure there's a lot of bor, there's a lot of community visibility on that, opportunity for public comment, those kinds of things. One of the challenges that I sometimes see with boards, and I get pulled in on the backend, is boards will, you know, see an OSBA policy, maybe not like the way it's worded, or not say, not like what it says, right? And put something different in there. And without the understanding that what's in there is actually required by the law. So, and so then they adopt this policy, and then somebody points out, like, now your policy is in violation of whatever has gone through the, you know, the legislature, or O D E, or whatever other governing agency. And so, that balance of, on one hand, as a policy board, you should be paying close attention to the policies that come through. Make sure you understand them, ask questions about them, you know, think about resources that might be needed to implement those policies, all those kinds of things. But, knowing that you need to be very careful if you're going to start trying to adjust those, the language that comes from the OSBA policies, yep.
So, this is one of the ones that I've struggled with, particularly the A R's. If, because I agree, we can't change them. So, why are we reviewing them if there's nothing we can do with them? And just like post them for public knowledge? Like, why even take the time? To even, even just to debate the thing we have no control over?
Right. That's a great question. So, the, I feel like what I'm about to say is really obvious, and it's, but it's also really complicated, right? No, 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 no. Because so, but it's a great, like, I haven't really thought about it in exactly this way, but the answer to that is, the legislature makes laws that we all have to comply with. But, you make policy, you adopt policies that then govern your district. And, and so, when, when staff are thinking about, okay, what do I do in this circumstance? Or a parent is thinking, what rights does my tag student have? Or, you know, something like that, they're not going to the O R S's. They're not going to the state law to figure that out. They're going to your policies to figure that out. And so, and you're oftentimes require, in many cases, you're required to have policies that mirror what's in the state law. So, for instance, state law says sexual harassment is prohibited. And board, school districts have to have policies that say this, 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 and this. So, then, you have to go have a policy that says this, 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 and this in order to be in compliance with the state law.
General, would OSBA will give us those?
Exactly.
The A R's for our review, just to say, hey, this is what's been kicked down from the legislation, legislation that's been passed. You're going to have to adopt this per legal rule.
Right, exactly.
And so, yeah, even though we don't get to vote on that, we are the governing body for, like, it's basically a trickle-down.
Right, exactly, exactly. Now, there are some things that are within your policy purview that are not specifically dictated by the law, right? So, where, where you do have some leeway about what you're, you know, going to, I mean, for instance, you have a three-step policy adoption process. You're not required to have that by law, right? So, you, you could go change that. So, one of the things that is challenging for, for boards is, in looking at these policies, figuring out, what is it that we can actually put our fingerprints on?
Add or subtract.
Yeah, exactly.
That still meets the law.
And what, you know, what is, what, and, and what, and, and what do we not have that leeway on? And that is something that, that you, you're going to want to check with OSBA or legal counsel or somebody before you go and do that. The other thing is, and I would find this challenging as a board member too, is thinking about, where do you want to put your policy review time and effort? Because there, you have a lot of policies, and they're being updated all, you know, OSBA is sending you those updates, and you can spend a lot of time going through those. So, the other thing that I see boards doing effectively is figuring out, okay, do we have policy priorities this year? Like, are there a couple of policies that we may want to spend a little bit more time on this year? Or you might have the superintendent come to you and say, hey, these are a couple of areas that I think need a lot, you know, more policy attention right now. And maybe that's in response to something going on in the community or whatever it is, but you're probably not going to be able to do that, and you don't need to do that with every one of these OSBA updates that come through. So, that's also, that's a board, that's, again, like, how do you work together as a collective to figure out, okay, we want to spend some time on, you know, these two policies this year, but we're not going to spend superintendent and district or legal expense, or whatever it is, on every policy that comes through?
For example, like, an equity policy, that's probably going to get a lot more attention.
Right, yep, yep. You know, I have one district that has me review every one of those OSBA policies to just see, do I agree with how OSBA has worded it? Does it make sense? Is there something else, you know, I would recommend adding? And that's really valuable for that district, but that's expensive, I mean, that's expensive. And it's a lot of board time. Like, it's a lot, you know, their, their board is spending, you know, time evaluating that too. And I don't, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think that most effective boards kind of may figure out, where is our... where is our policy priority? And where are these, you know, just routine policies that we end up needing to, you know, approve?
And I just wanna follow up on that AR discussion that Josh brought up. So like, our last meeting, I think we included an AR about head lice.
Okay.
And we didn't have any discussion on it. It was basically just to inform the public, like, hey, there's a change.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Because head lice is a top topic.
Head lice is a very important topic, and from time to time, that, that AR is gonna change. But that's not something that the board has to, has to...
No, and we didn't. And we opened it for discussion, nobody had any comments.
But, I mean, because that's one of those things, like, I, I had an issue with it. But I'm like, it's an AR, there's not, I mean, what's the point of me saying anything? There's, there's nothing I can do to change it. And I also wanted to know their intention for changing it. I had a pretty strong opinion of probably why, but I don't know. But that's where, like, I would talk about something, I could just kick a hornet's nest, and I don't want to.
Got it. And, and I think what Josh is referring to is that the idea of lanes, that the AR is administrative.
Exactly. Right, right, right. Like, that's where, that's, that's the, that's the superintendent level. So one of the things that I have seen board members do when they have individual concerns about an AR is if you, you can bring that to the superintendent's attention, right? I, you might wanna think about this in terms of this AR. But beyond that, that you're giving information to the superintendent, but it's not, but the, the board as a whole isn't acting on it. And, and no individual board member has the authority to say to the superintendent, you know, change this AR, or don't enact this AR, or something like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And, and it's, you know, it is, it's a, it's a, um, part of the reason that I have this slide is because I think it is, this can, it's a little confusing for some board. It's not confusing, but it's an area you wanna have a common understanding about. Like, where, where you're a policy-level board, what are the things you're gonna focus on? And, and, you know, and where do you just, like, let the legal process and the OSBA process just happen? So...
I have a, I guess, follow-up question. In your experience, let's say there was a, an AR rule that was obviously outside the board's lane, but they saw, like, something problematic with it. And let's say no one else specifically saw that. I think it's probably someone, someone coming to, like, what you're speaking is like, hey, here's the issue that I potentially see, and then put that back to superintendent and assistant superintendent to say, hey, take a look at this.
That's something we would really wanna know. And I, I think, you know, given our, the track record of, you know, the office of superintendent, we really wanna know where our board is at emotionally on, on the whole gamut of issues and policies that we have. So it could turn into us actually making that correction in our AR, because we didn't think about it the way that you brought up, so...
But are you allowed to make a correction to an AR? I thought that's, that's a, that's a law from...
Well, no.
It depends. It's the same thing. It's the same thing. Like, it, it may, some of it may be the law, and some of it may be something that we can, we can adjust. So that's where, 'cause I have, I have boards come to me and say, can we change this in a policy? And I have superintendents come to me and say, can I change this in the AR? Right? Or, or go to OSBA, right? Like, one of the, I mean, it doesn't always have to be me, but, but checking out what that is.
The bottom line is that we, that we discuss it, we talk about it, we're always in that, that circular improvement plan of talking and feedback. And, and so if you did have an issue, you know, and it...
We adopted a policy and AR that had some really confusing languages on reporting, you know, it was the Title IX updates and some, you know, you look at that, and you're like, who kinda wrote this? This doesn't make sense. In one section, it's this person, another section, it's this, and all of it. But, you know, that was verbatim out of the legislation. It's like, you know what? That's probably just not one I'm gonna mess, right, mess with. However, I think you had brought up on a reporting form saying, hey, I think we, there's, there's a space here where I think we can actually make this a little better, that had really nothing to do with the legislation. It was just a tool. But those, those, a lot of those forms will, you know, it'll be AR1, AR2, AR3, 'cause they're, they're kinda these addendum pieces to the policy. And it's like, yeah, that one has no legal ramifications by making some changes there. So...
I think just for us understanding that, like, we see this, we understand you're gonna take a look at it, maybe.
So, so...
I think if you see something, I think Scott, Dan are both open to like, yeah, maybe we didn't see this, maybe they would...
We would wanna know.
They would wanna know.
So we had an issue.
We would, okay.
Just not something we're revealed.
But that's not something that's special even just to you. Any community member, anybody with any kind of expertise could do the same thing. They could say to admin, you know, this is my suggestion.
Okay, I guess I'm just kinda, because Scott, ARs could not be modified, but it sounds like they can be, but not from us. It comes from...
They're the one, the ultimate one. We don't vote on ARs. We don't vote on ARs, so you would just be basically giving your...
But when and down, Josh, just ask, you know? Because, you know, a lot of times, it's all in context. But, you know, if it's an AR, that would fall in the administrator realm.
Okay.
It's like, it's like when we developed the Narcan policy, you know, about a year ago, or like, a year ago. You know, we, we, you know, the need was, okay, we had the policy that the associate AR was with input from Scott and Dan. How are we gonna get this out? And how do we give it to the school nurses? And what's their involvement? I mean, that's not us, right? We're saying, we gotta have this in every school, because there's an epidemic of tragedy going on right now. Let them help figure out the AR. We get to see it when we approve everything, and, and just to make sure that it's good on all sides.
That got cleared up. I really appreciate it. I understand now.
Yeah, good, good. 'Cause it's, it is, it's not, it's not clear. It's, it's not always clear. So that's, and that's part of the purpose of the first and second, and for, for all you, the third reading is making sure members of the public, members of the board, are, you know, reading this stuff, saying, like, this doesn't make sense. And again, if it doesn't make sense, but the legislator said it's the law, then we're stuck, and, you know, we're gonna have to duke it out in the courts, and you can't do anything about it. But if it's, can we add a couple sentences in here about, let's make sure we're providing training? Or let's do, you know, like, whatever, good ideas, you're here for, you know, good ideas. Those are things that, that absolutely bring to the table. So, okay.
And I think just one more little thing, you know, so in something, I think, if we were ever in a situation where there was a complaint brought against the district, you know, maybe it's, I won't, I won't even try to speculate on what it is, but we, we failed to adopt a policy that we were required to have, then that, you know, our ability to say that we were not negligent, or we've had these policies, we've done these trainings, we've done all of these things, top to bottom, you know, make us, it makes for a stronger case, should we ever find ourselves in a situation where there's a complaint or something. So that's where, and, and we, there's been a lot of voices back to OSBA on the fact that all of the increase in complaint procedures and ARs, I mean, there's, there's discussions happening to, with OSBA of like, 'cause it used to just be one. It used to be KL, and that was kinda it. And now we've got these multiple ones, and they're all sort of similar, but slightly different, and trying to, you know, there's a lot of push to say, can we get back to where we have one practice and policy for complaints?
But that has been, in some ways, the result of the legislature, 'cause the legislature passes a sexual harassment law and says, your complaint, if you get a sexual harassment complaint, you need to do these 10 things. If you get a bias, or a hate crime, or a hate speech complaint, you have to do these things. They're really similar. And if you get something that is both a bias claim and sexual harassment, then what do you do? And if somebody files it under KL, then what do you do? You know, like, it's complicated in some ways, because the legislature is looking at these things not from your lens, you know, the people in this room's lens. They're, they are just saying, we need this law, or we need this law, or we need this law, and they're not aligned. So OSBA is trying to, you know, and we're all trying to figure that out. So... Okay, I wanna be mindful of people's time. These are just some last things that I have seen, you know, as I do work and train with boards. Some of them are really obvious, and some of these we've already talked about. So what I wanna, but I wanna just maybe mention that second bullet, because I think that this is a place where it is challenging. You have constituents who will come and say, this terrible thing happened, right? Whether it's to my kid, or I'm a staff member, or, you know, I was driving by and I saw this terrible thing. And, and it's really easy to say, that's terrible, right? That's awful that that happened, and I'm gonna go talk to the superintendent, and we're gonna make it right. And there's always two sides to the story. Not saying that the terrible thing didn't happen, but having a way, you know, your own kind of response to something like that, that you're comfortable with, where you're saying, hey, those are the kinds of things that our district takes really seriously. And either I encourage you to contact the superintendent, or I'll have the superintendent's office reach out to you, or something like that. But, but I've just seen a lot of situations where, you know, it's easy to agree with somebody's experience, and kind of inadvertently promise an outcome that then gets things much more complicated. So having a way that you're comfortable with, with receiving negative information about the district, that doesn't do that is a, like, is a really good practice. So... I think a lot of these other things, we've already...
Jennifer, you do a really good job of modeling that, of how you respond to community members that, that email you, talking about, you know, individual board members and, and all, every single email, it's really consistent.
They're probably not very satisfied for the receiver to receive.
But it's thoughtful, at least it's thoughtful.
Right, right, right.
It's managing their expectations, I think, is what, like...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I do follow, I mean, with my own response, but I don't ever want people to think that my response speaks for the board.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, and I think just having, like, even this meeting and this conversation, I think is a really great practice, 'cause one of the things that I just see a lot of is, you know, boards, like, you're really the role model for the district. And in many, and people are watching you carefully. And how you work individually, but also work together, is oftentimes, you know, that trickles down in the district. And places where, where we see really divisive boards, you just see, you know, staff starting to act like that, and community members starting to act like that. And so, you're gonna bring really different opinions and perspectives to the table, that's what you're here to do. But making sure you can work together and with the superintendent in a way that kind of, you know, models the behavior we want our kids to, you know, demonstrate. Like, it sounds, I don't mean to be preachy about it, but it's, but I just, I often get called in when it's not working that way, and it's hard to see. So paying attention to it is a really good thing.
And I totally agree. And Tom, Tom and I are the only people here that were here when I first started. You know, Tom's the last, the last one. Having an effective board is like night and day, the difference between how the, the district, I mean, obviously, teachers are always gonna do a great job, but the amount of work that admin can attend to when they don't have crazy board stuff going on is, you know, good for kids. So I think that when we have our stuff together, it, it really helps.
Yep.
Yep.
We want them in, we want them in the buildings not attending to our stuff.
That's right.
Absolutely. So, so I think, if I can, if I can get there without turning it off, I have a big thank you. So...
Questions?
Yeah, for Jolly, questions, or do we have the expert at the...
I do, but I'm gonna wait, 'cause I speak as much as it is.
It's 7:25, Josh.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's not too late.
So, we're talking about the, the serial communication, 'cause I've just always been a stickler for rules and...
Yep.
But, and I've talked to Scott about this, so this is not a surprise, but since we're here as a board, one of the things that I find really difficult to do, you say a successful board, right? Like, any team that I've ever been on, we hang out, we go bowling. We get to know one another outside of our business roles, to just kinda know your personalities, to take an interest in their life. We don't get to do that. Because then anytime we meet, no matter where we're at, there's more than three of us, there's a quorum. So team-building stuff, without having to go through, anyways, it's frustrating.
So that is a great question. You, and, and you are allowed to have social gatherings that are not a publicly noticed meeting. So you can ha, you can all have each other over to dinner, as long as you are not talking about district business. So, and actually, I think that that is a really good, so, uh, three of the things that I have seen be very effective for board members is, one, that they are actually engaging in social gatherings at least two or three times a year, right? Where you're meeting in a social, you know, whether with your families or not, there's no discussion of district business, but you're just, like, remembering that you all like each other, right? And that you're all nice, good people, right? Two, that you're engaging in regular training. And three, that you're engaging in regular, like, kind of big, big-picture agenda planning and what you want to get done. Like, so a couple times a year, are you meeting and thinking, okay, what's on our agenda going forward? How are we gonna agree on what's on our agenda going forward? Kind of that bigger picture than just what's, you know, what's coming up this month. So that you, 'cause that's how boards can track, that they feel like they're being effective over time. You know, what did we kinda talk about six months ago that we wanted to accomplish in the next six months? Have we been able to do that? If we haven't been able to do that, fine, that's 'cause we got pulled off into these other things. That's not a problem. But how do we, you know, like, how do we keep thinking about ourselves being an effective board over a period of time? Then the training, and then that kind of social bonding is super important, and you are allowed to do that. You just have to make really clear, you know, you're, no side conversations about district business, nothing like that.
And that's really hard to do.
That's hard to do. And so you have to, you have to monitor each other, right?
At, at school board conferences, which is something that maybe I could bring up right now, like, we, the next school board conference in November, we should all go. Because then that is a built-in kind of social opportunity. But that's in the past where I've had, I'm like, oh, I gotta stop. I gotta stop talking about that right now, because it's not appropriate, because you wanna deliberate in public, right?
Right, right.
But it is an opportunity, a nice social kind of opportunity. And, you know, we could start, start a tradition.
I'm gonna throw a mean gutter ball.
Me too.
Got to fix my shoulder.
Me too.
And the second, the second thing would be, would, it's, I find myself self-censoring a lot, because our meetings are on YouTube.
Yeah.
And I look, only two people watch the thing, 200 people watch the things. Like, no, so it's like, I feel like there's some very difficult topics sometimes, especially with schools and the bond that come up, like, well, why haven't you guys consolidated? Or, like, I just, I, I shy away from talking about that, because I know it's such a sensitive subject. But I know if there's hardly any, I'm, I'm more open to share. We're following the rules by taking minutes. But there's not this little thing that could be clipped off of YouTube, or I misspeak, which happens a lot.
Right.
So it's, I know Scott, and Scott's intentions are great, 'cause he wants transparency.
Right.
Which, but I also find it almost sometimes hindrance of getting to the nitty-gritty, getting stuff done. And I just started, so I could be completely wrong. But...
Well, it's not Scott's idea to record the meetings. That, that, that's, somebody else decided that. I don't know who.
Right.
How long, Tom, from the...
He's always, always been doing it.
We don't have to, it's just what, what the culture's...
We could choose not to, but I think there'd be a lot...
There'd be a lot of pushback.
At this point, there'd be a lot of pushback.
And I'm not, and there's, there's significant challenges with that, so you really, right, right.
So when we talk about serial communication, these things, it's like, it's like, I, I, do I really want the first time I talk about or air these thoughts out to be in public with my colleagues? That's a very tough task.
It's, yes.
It is, but by the same token, it's what we're charged with.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're charged with communicating with our constituents, and that's one way of doing it.
There's also no, correct me if I'm wrong, Jolly, that reaching out to say, board leadership, hey, I'm, maybe as a newer board member, hey, you know, Jennifer, Aaron, either one of you, one-on-one, you guys are... of you, one-on-one, you guys are, you know, chair and vice chair, can I run this idea by you?
Totally.
That's totally acceptable.
Yes.
In providing guidance.
Just don't do that with three other people.
Correct. Or Tom is, you know, who's, who's our, who's, you know, I don't mean this elder, old wise.
Exactly.
Our, our.
The marriage.
Our experience, experience.
Experienced tenure member, you know, Tom's got a lot of wisdom, from being on the board for twelve plus years.
Scott's your sounding board. You know, run it by Scott.
Well, that's a good point.
Right.
Scott or Dan, because they can say things, it's not seri, it doesn't, the rules don't apply when we're talking to them. So, that's a really good suggestion.
Yeah, and then, and then if we're all, if we're all spitballing with those guys, then those thoughts will coalesce as you develop the agenda.
Yep. Because if Scott gets a call from three people, and it's all kind of the same input.
Yeah.
That's, that's what he needs.
It's kind of the same hardware right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the reason why we spend a full hour every week with both of our board chairs.
More than, more than that some weeks.
More than that some weeks.
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum.
And it helps, too, with all the policy work that we've done, and, and getting your feedback on that. And, you know, there's been two instances this last few months, where I said, hey, let's pull that off, so I have more time to work on it. But, you know, I, like you, I, I want to be prepared, because the last thing I want you is, you to ask me a question, when I've sent you six policies, and you're reading off of one sentence. I mean, I'm not that good to know and be prepared for that kind of question. So, asking for that information in advance, and then, if three of you, because you didn't all, didn't have the serial communication, all have a question about a policy, well, maybe we're not quite ready for that policy yet.
And one of the things I think that's rare, that, that, that doesn't get pointed out a lot, I think, because we take it for granted, is that there's a really deep understanding of the no surprises. And we are so unlike just about every other district out there, where a superintendent's getting surprised during a public meeting, and it's being recorded, and of course, you know, the superintendent's not prepared to see it, or a board member gets surprised by the superintendent, because the superintendent didn't have a conversation beforehand. So I just want to say that, you know, how thankful and grateful, and I know I can speak for Dan, too, that we are, that we have sort of this, this understanding that we don't surprise each other.
Well, and that's what turned it around for us. Like I mentioned, when Tom and I were, you know, back, I don't know how many years ago, but then, sticking to that no surprises helps relationships. And so it helps us conduct our business better.
Yeah. We should be having, asking you guys questions during a meeting, but they shouldn't, it shouldn't, it shouldn't feel like an interrogation, which I see.
Yeah, and if, like, say, you, because you do call me, and I appreciate that. When we have our meeting of, for the four of us, I, I will, you know, pass on and say, well, this, I know that Josh feels this way about this.
I, I call you because, out of respect for your position and leadership.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The chain of command, like, I view you, and Erin is my team captains. I don't feel like I should be doing anything really without you guys knowing. Or, if I'm hearing something, right? So, but that's just.
And the no surprises thing doesn't mean a horse and pony show either, it's the opposite. It's, it's saying, I may ask questions, or I'm going to ask questions on this topic, Scott, to make sure you're prepared to, to answer. Or I'm going to ask this particular question, so the public can know more, make sure that you come prepared to, to ask, to answer that.
Well, I think our board right now, especially over the last two years, at least the last two plus years that I've been on the board, I mean, I think we're super guarded, and we have a reference point of how things shouldn't be done, you know, maybe four or five years ago. And we're very guarded of that now. And, and to the extreme of, okay, we're going to do these, you know, trainings, we don't ever want to be in that position again, we want to be in this position now. No surprises, everybody's communicating the proper ways, and we're, you know, you're firing on all cylinders, we don't want anyone to jeopardize that. Because we've seen what off the rails looks like.
Well, it's another reason why, what also sets us apart, is that we really take a lot of time authoring our board superintendent agreement. But that's just not something we just cut and paste it. I mean, we started creating that four years ago, we just refined that over the years, and we really, it's, whatever's written there is what we stick to, which I think is really important, to have a common understanding.
It's a really good, solid, I, I, I have it here, I mean, it's one of the things that I looked at, and it's a really, you have good operating agreements. So, remembering these and holding to these, I, I absolutely echo that.
Yeah, and as I say, Josh, I think, I, I don't want you to feel, give Erin and I as our position, because we're the same, we all were, the only difference that we have is that we just get to develop the agenda. But we are good people to talk to when you need more of an explanation, because we've had a little bit more of the backstory. So, that's to, we're totally happy to help in that regard.
Prepare for more calls, Tom, I'm about to.
We have, like, maybe, a clarification, Jolly, is, when, you can definitely run into this, there's a, there's serial, there's an, there's an item we're going to vote on the agenda.
Right.
Now, there's, there's communications before that, that are definitely, but what if it's just a topic, you're just, you're just spitballing about something you heard? Is that, is there, do you get any more leeway, or are the goalposts move a little bit for you?
So that's, that, there, there is a little, like, is it a decision before the board? But the problem is, is, so that was the example of, okay, if you're talking about a bond in four years, you know, kind of thing. But I hesitate about that, because if you're spitballing about district business, it's, there's too much of a chance that it could be something. Because it could be even something like, hey, I know we're not going to do this, but wouldn't it be great if we had, you know, four more basketball courts, right? And then, and so that's, there's no decision before the board, talking about four more basketball courts, but before you know it, like, is that now turning into an idea? And then you're getting a donation, and all of a sudden, in six weeks, maybe you're voting on something that's about the, you know, like, you don't know how those, those creative ideas are going to go.
Freestyling generally doesn't have a good outcome.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Good ideas got to start from somewhere. That's, that's the problem, you got to start somewhere. And if you don't start, because you might get in trouble.
Right.
Well, and everyone just stays at home.
Right, right.
That's a good point.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Just use judgment.
It's one of the challenges with how public service is set up.
Yep.
These days.
Yep.
And don't be, I mean, like, overly afraid about making a mistake.
Right.
I have made plenty.
Yeah, I struggle with that.
So. You just learn, and do, you know, move on.
So, Jolly, this is something that I've also struggled with a lot, and it came up during the bond, because there was just so much misinformation happening on social media. And I think Jennifer did a great job, and a lot of community, community members really appreciated her involvement. I know other board members got involved, but it's one of those things that I just do not want to do, for, you know, a variety of reasons. But am I neglecting, you say best practices, right? That's why, this is a best practices question. Do you, what's your position on board members and social media as far as best practices?
I, I, I don't have one, because I think it's pretty individual. I think that it is, if board, if there is a board member who is active on social media, and engages in forums, then I would never say to that board member, don't do that. I think that there's a, you have to be very careful, that you are only speaking as an individual, that you are not making any commitments as a board member, and you have to know the risks of that. I mean, social media is risky, right? So, you know, if you're, if, if you're going to be messing it up out there, like, I mean, I, you can never tell a board member not to, that's their First Amendment right to do that. But, but there are, there are risks and benefits for that. I know a lot of board members who stay away from social media, and I think that that is a very fine practice, too. Right? So, or maybe just post their stuff, but don't respond to comments. I mean, there's different ways to approach it. So.
Do you feel like board members have a responsibility to maybe correct mis, poor information?
When there is persistent misinformation in the community, I oftentimes work with superintendents and boards around, how are we getting out correct information? So how are we, for instance, posting an FAQ on the website, right? Or distributing that, that information in a, in a positive way, that provides correct information to a lot of the community.
Remember during COVID, some of you were on the board, where we had a really strict communication protocol that we stuck to. It was really to get around a lot of the misinformation, just to make sure we're all on the same page. I will say, though, if we do, this hasn't happened in a number of years, but several years ago, we did have a board member that would post things on their, their social media page, that were incredibly problematic, put us at risk for things, really took us off task, those types of things. So, I think you got to take it in context, but realize, you know, what is the effect of whatever is being said on social media? Even if it's completely within the rules.
Right.
What is the effect of it?
Have you seen any districts put specifically goalposts or guidelines for board members on, with regards specifically to social media, like, tips, techniques, when to post, but not to post, write in a word document first, sit on for a week?
You know, not, I'm not, I'm sure that exists, those kinds of best practices, and I'd be happy to think about if I can find any. I don't, you do, as elected officials, have very strong First Amendment rights to communicate, right? So, so I've sometimes had boards come, board, boards come to me and say, we have this one board member who's off the ranch, and posting all this stuff on social media that's terrible for the district, and, and, and can you make her stop, right? And I'm like, I, you know, like, no.
Oh, Jolly.
If I could, right? So, so there are, there are best practices, there probably aren't as many guardrails in terms of, like, you can't do this, right?
Free speech protects the speech we don't like.
Exactly. There you go, there you go.
Well, and the, the case of the bond, too, is a little bit different. Like, I totally agree with Jolly about talking to the superintendent about how we can get an FAQ out, or a district-wide response, right?
Right.
In the sense of the, the bond, it's like, we can advocate in a way that the district cannot advocate.
In that case, we could, yes.
Absolutely.
And that, and so, like, that's a, a different point of view.
Yes.
You know, kind of.
We can influence or try to sway votes.
Yes, right.
They could.
But for instance, like, one of the things, I think, you know, I worry about board members getting into, like, the comments, and responding to comments, and then, you know, comments get really ugly, and then, you know, that can just go down a, a difficult.
Yes.
Path. But I have had board members, when they see inaccurate information on social media, just say, please see this district page.
Yeah.
For information, right? Where you're not calling people out, or, you know, getting into it, but for any readers, you're pointing them to where there is accurate information.
Yeah, I do that a lot with the, the class size issue, and that might come up again sometime. We have a dashboard, I've got it linked on my phone, so I can easily access it. And so I don't have to correct the conversation, I just say, hey, you might want, you might want to look at this actual data, not just suppositions.
Right, right, right.
I think you can get out there, too, about social media, about good guidance of, number one, you're only speaking for yourself. I, you know, I've used that before, like, look, I'm a member of the board, but I'm only speaking for myself, or you put the disclaimer out for any statement, right? You know, I'm making a statement on that board, that's the number one thing. Don't be instigatory, don't be, don't be nasty, right? Be factual, be, don't get involved, like, do you say, when people start going nasties, it's like, I'm out, I'm not, I'm done, I made my statement, and I'm exiting, right?
Yeah.
Because, you know, correcting misinformation, asking people to think, hey, maybe think about this, I'm done after that. And then, you know, it, it's just, I think those are the biggest things that I've found, common sense-wise, is just, you know, speak on your own behalf, don't do anything instigatory. Like, I've gotten fired up on stuff, and I'm like, okay, I'm going to pull the emotion out, I'm going to write something, like you said, down, and I'm going to walk away for 10 minutes, and then I'm going to come back and edit it, and then, and then maybe I'll post it, right?
Yeah.
Because emotion does play into it.
We have been so thankful.
Yeah.
All of you did a great job.
Well, and, and sometimes it gets to a point, like, especially, I mean, I'll go back to the bond thing, it's like, there's so much, you know, so, so many things being put out there, that were just absolutely categorically false. And many of us were like, no, you know, this is, this is, this is absolute falsehood, and your calculations are completely erroneous, right? There's nothing wrong with putting that out there. But yeah, I think being professional, knowing when to exit stage left, and then also just not speaking on behalf of, or you're speaking on behalf of yourself. I always think this way, too, and this is something I always say about a lot of things, and what, especially in social media. I'm not one to really get involved in social media as a board member, I did a little more during the bond effort, but I'm not one to engage much on social media, I can't, I'm just, for my own mental health, I'm not there. And, and I think the adage is, you know, we can, as board members, be engaged in social media, just because you can, doesn't mean you should, right? You don't have to be, right? And that's against nobody else who wants to be.
Right.
But again, that's, that's not the qualifications of a board member, is to be engaged on Facebook. It doesn't say that there. If you choose to, great, right? If you choose not to, hey, that's your choice. You know, but always, like, putting things out there, you know, that, you know, on social media, like, hey, just because you can put it out, it doesn't, doesn't mean necessarily you should, right? And just being really careful with what you say.
Well said.
And I want to be clear, I, you know, I don't think anybody up here, I was reading everything, everybody did a fantas, fantastic job. You're, Jennifer, you were a fantastic leader, and we're very blessed to have you. You know, you're very careful with what you say, and you're always being respectful of your other board members. You, you have, I, it's what I brought, I had nothing to do with you.
Oh, absolutely.
It was just a personal evaluation.
I didn't take it that way.
Because I want to do my job well.
Well, and, but I, I totally agree with what Aaron said. I, I think that, I mean, I had a certain comfort level, as to what I was doing. You don't have that same comfort level, I'm not judging you for not doing it. You know what I'm saying? So, it's like, I, I.
That helps to hear, actually, because.
No, I.
It's a parent nature.
Yeah. Oh, another thing, too, about the social media thing, that over the years, too, that I've kind of, or, or just anything, it's like, I'm not going to go tell anybody, really, about what my thoughts are, about something that the board has not talked about yet in public.
Yeah.
Because that's not respectful of my fellow board members at all. So, that's, yeah, just a, a realization over the years that I've come to.
I'm sorry, I have to do a time check, because I have to pick my husband up at the hospital, I mean, at the airport, at 9:30. So I am.
10 minutes.
So. I don't, I don't want to cut anything short.
Any others, any other comments?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Everybody good.
Jolly, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jolly.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for all of the work you do, and I'm glad to hear you feel like you're working well together, that's just great, great news, and it's, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
All right, everybody, without objection, meeting adjourned.